Rule call, please.
Mr. Bayora?
Here.
Mr. Benz?
Here.
Dr. Feig?
Here.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Here.
Mr. Lizza?
Here.
Mr. Lockinger?
Here.
Mr. Miller? Mrs. Rhodes?
Here.
Mr. Assipiter?
Here. Eight present. We have no assistant's comments to pertain to the board meeting this evening. It doesn't pertain to the board meeting.
Are you talking about fiscal matters?
Uh, no, we're not. It does not pertain to the -- what's on the agenda this evening.
Tell me what's on the agenda. I'm sorry, what part of my speech pertains to it?
Look at the, uh...
At the meeting, you'll be...
You pose his own line, so like, you know, I got your name.
Occupying Wall Street is not a legitimate concern of ours.
Talking about sophomore and finances, is that presumed?
Has nothing to do with occupying Wall Street.
Well, that's just the title of the speech.
If it pertains to, if it pertains...
Absolutely.
Yeah.
No, I want to talk about finances and school budgets.
You didn't fill the card out properly. You put occupying Wall Street, and we're moving on.
Well, you didn't tell me that before. I'm telling you right now, you wrote on here, this is a financial subject on this. Occupy Wall Street and financials.
You'll be asked to approve the minutes of the September 8th and the September 15th, meetings of the voting session. Under Finance, you'll be asked to approve the Treasurers' Report, the Board Detailed Revenue Report.
New business.
Uh, Sam, I have a, you know, I'd like to talk under Finance, the Treasurers' Report.
Okay.
At the last meeting, Mr. Lockinger made a big point of my saying how much money we were losing, and went back, and I found this was a two, two, two mistake or omission. Do you know what that means?
Year-to-date?
Mm-hmm. Year-to-date. Mr. Lockinger, can you show me where that is on these reports?
I'm not, uh, I don't have to answer your questions.
Wait a minute, you criticized me.
No, I did, because...
Where's the YTD?
YTD?
You don't know what that is?
No, I don't know what that is. I have to refer to a financial wizard like you. YTD.
I would appreciate on the reports if it would say YTD, or whether it's monthly. Is that a problem? Hello? Thank you.
Do you want a calendar here, or just...
No, no, if it just says, where it says interest, okay. This is the monthly report, and it says this amount of money. That's not the monthly amount. That's the yearly amount listed by the month. That's all I'm saying, though. If it says year-to-date, then we know the difference between what we got this month, and this, this is cumulative, right? That's cumulative.
Actually, I was thinking of changing those reports to show what the interest was that month, and then that interest will be added to the principal following month, so that we would always know where we were, and that's what our plan is.
I think that would be wonderful, and I would appreciate that very much. Had that said year-to-date on there, I would have not made, I would not have read it. When I get a report, I accept it as it is written. I would not have questioned it until I went back and realized that's cumulative.
So, it's understandable it was written there.
Because there's no year-to-date. Right. If it said YTD interest, per monthly interest, that would be different. But this figure is for twelve months, not one month, and it's not indicated on this report. And I think the change you're talking about looks real good.
Remember, Mrs. Dye took over for Mr. Porter in the interim. Now that I'm the Treasurer, I get to make my own reports, and hopefully it'll be more clear to the Board and myself.
Thank you. That's, that would help me. Thanks.
Sam, can I ask a question?
Yes.
On this report you give in this bill, August 31st, 2011, this thing over here for, I guess people can show us.
Yes, yes.
On the last page, it doesn't show any interest for Scottsdale Bank and Trust.
Right, that's because Scottsdale Bank and Trust sends out their statements quarterly, and, of course, the interest accrues daily, but they don't actually post the interest until quarterly, and it wasn't the end of the quarter, on August 31st, and that's why it didn't show then. You understand what I'm saying?
It's done every three months instead of every month.
Right, it shows every three months, right.
Okay, so, they've always been doing that?
Yes.
That's always done every three months?
Yes.
Then, that's where the mistake, it's been all along.
They've been showing it for a month.
Because, you know, there was a question before, I questioned that nine, 10 months ago.
It's been showing monthly.
And when I questioned it, you know, PNC shows so much lower than Scottsdale Bank and Trust, in reality, it was not going to be that, because Scottsdale Bank and Trust, what we saw was for three months.
Three months.
What you saw for PNC was for the month.
That makes sense.
We have a problem solved.
We've never been told that.
That makes sense.
All right, we'll figure it, we'll fix that.
That's what the problem is.
That's why there was so much discrepancy.
Thank you very much.
So, I mean, when you see something like that, you know...
You take it for face value?
You have to read somebody's mind, you know, unless you see it and write it why that short.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So, sorry for all the problems I caused.
Okay.
Glad we had an intention.
Let's move on to new business.
Okay, under new business, Mrs. Hoffman, working with Dr. Saloon, updated our protocol for our automatic external defibrillators, and we would like you to be able to approve that at the next meeting. Item number four, Mr. Salem got a request from Ronnie Frye and Marvin Stagger of the Alberton Civic Center. They are interested in using the, some of the leftover decorative stones from the old junior high. They would like to construct a monument of some kind at the cemetery, and they would like permission to remove the stones from where we have them in storage in that metal building where we park the vans. So, we would ask that you would vote on that at the next meeting.
Did they indicate that, or anything?
Whenever they tore down the junior high, yeah, there's a lot in there. There is enough so, there is enough that they can't put the new vans in there. So, I, to be honest with you, I don't know exactly how many there are.
Sounds like it's going to be put together, so...
But, yeah, they are.
I'm going to say there's eight or 10 of them, one of which is the big crown that used to, it's at the very top of the building.
So, is that a question? So, is it okay with the Board if I go ahead and tell them to take that?
We'll get a formal vote next, next week.
Okay, with Thursday?
Yeah, right.
I have a question about that. Is there, like, a guarantee that it'll be used that way, or could they be resold or anything?
Um, I think Mr. Frye and Mr. Stagger have, you know, sufficient reputation in the community. They're part of the civic association.
Yeah, I'm not making any accusations. I'm just saying, maybe we could do it with the stipulation that it would be used for the intended purpose and not resold.
Sure, sure. We'll put that in the motion.
Okay. For purposes.
Absolutely. Okay, the next item of business is Mr. Lee, and sophomore at an elementary school, so we'll turn the chair over to Mr. Lee.
Last week, we were, we received the final scores from the PSSA from the state, and we were quite pleased as to how SES did this past year. If you remember, a few years back, we were a school-in-school improvement, and the following year, we made great strides and improved our scores, and have done so every year since that time, working our way out of school improvement and beyond. And hopefully, what you see this evening will be a good snapshot, as Dr. Moner puts it, of, you know, what we've been doing at SES in grades, well, in all the grades, two, three, four, five, but especially in the grades that we are doing the testing. Last year, we had approximately 565 students in SES, grades two through five. Of that total, 52% of those were eligible for free and reduced lunch. Those become the economically disadvantaged students that you'll see later on in the charts. Our special ed population was 11% of that total up on the top line, and our grade configuration was grades two through five. In this past school year, when you take a look at how we did overall in grades, testing in three, four, five with the PSSA, 93% of the students were proficient or advanced. The state average for this past year for mathematics overall was 77%. So, you can see, we're considerably above the target score, or actually, the average, not even the target score, but the average for mathematics. In reading, 83% of our students in grades three, four, five were proficient or advanced, and on the state average was 74%. Again, another large increase between the two. Fifth grade, we, the writing test is given in grades five, eight, and 11, and I can only speak for grade five, because that's all that's in my building. 85% of the students were proficient and advanced in, in writing. The state average for this year in writing was 67%. Again, a large difference between the two. And probably the one we're most proud of, and I don't think we, as I was looking through all the other school districts, fourth grade science, fourth, eighth, and 11th do the science test, fourth grade, 100% of the students were proficient and advanced, every one of them. 83% of the students on the state level were proficient and advanced. So, we were, I had a look at that a second time to make sure I did add it up, and it did come up to 100, but it is something that we're quite proud of. Quite proud of all these scores, but especially that one. So, looking at the grades individually, as you can see in grade three, grade three, the top, the blue line represents the third grade, and you see, over the last three years, we've been 90% or above, 90% of the kids proficient or advanced. The red line indicates the state average for each of those, and you notice that all three of those are in the 80s, and the somewhat greenish line at the bottom is the benchmark. That's the target line that we have to meet. In '08, '09, and '09, '10, it was, they required us to have 56% of the students proficient or advanced, and then this past school year, that rose to 67% of the students needed to be proficient or advanced. As you can see, there's a large difference, a 24% difference between where the benchmark was for third grade math and how we actually did with the 91%. Third grade reading, again, the last three years, we've been in the 80 percentile, 80% of the students proficient or advanced. Kind of leveled out there. The state has been pretty steady in the 70s, and the benchmark for reading this past year went up from 63 up to 72%. So, again, we were 13% higher than what we were expected to do in grade three reading. As we continue going through the next several years, the benchmark will continue to increase. The first, those first couple of years, it stayed the same for a couple of years, and now it's, to get everybody to 2014, it's going to go up every year, so we have to keep working hard with that. Grade four math, it's nice to see the lines going in an upward area there, so the blue line represents grade four math. Again, 92% back in '08, '09 were proficient or advanced. This year, 96% of our students were in that area. The state average, 85%, and the benchmark, again, was 67% for the math. In grade four reading, a nice solid increase from three years ago, 76% up to 88% now, and our, on the state average, the, the state average pretty stayed steady at 72, 73, and 73, and the benchmark was at 72. So, we're doing very well in reading in grade four. And grade five, which I believe kind of made, looking at all the grades, probably made the most increase overall in math, went from the 80s, 81%, up to 91% in math, and you notice the red line, the state average, stayed the same over the last three years, and the benchmark stayed at 60, was at 67%. So, again, we're over 20% higher than we're supposed to be in grade five math. And in grade five reading, this is the area, we, when we first looked at this, the, the benchmark is 72%, and last year, when we, the benchmark was 63%, and we ended up at, our students were at 64%, and we thought, okay, we're just making, just barely got over the bar. So, this year, when we got the scores and the benchmark was 72, we were at 76, and again, looked at it and said, well, we're just barely over the bar. But in reality, once we looked at it some more, I said, you know, we really, there's a 12% increase from last year to this year, which is very significant. So, there's several ways you could look at that, but the way we wanted to look at it is that we did make great strides in fifth grade reading this past school year, and again, since the, the benchmark is going to continue going up, we want to make sure we continue that blue line going in an upward direction. Again, fourth grade science, they've been very good over the last three years, 96% back in '08, '09, and this year, 100%. State average for grade four science across the state, 83%. Our fifth grade writing, we, writing in five, eight, and 11, again, another improvement from back in '08, '09, 69% of the students were proficient or advanced, and this year, 85% of our students, on the state average, the, the increase was only, only about 4%, Two of the areas that we look at for, that tend to cause us to work a lot harder, is the economically disadvantaged students, which we call the ED up there. Again, you can see, there was a, in third grade, there was a drop between last year and this year, and the math, on this, these particular slides, the blue line represents the math, the red line represents the reading of our third graders. Both reading and math in third grade for the economically disadvantaged kids went down significantly in my mind, but again, we need to continue working on improving that. In fourth grade, it was pretty steady. Math, 93% last year, 91% this year, and the reading, 76 to, down a little bit to 73%. Again, for the economically disadvantaged students in grade four. Grade five, again, slight increases, significant increase if you go back to '08, '09 in math, 82% up to 87% just of the students that are economically disadvantaged. And our reading scores stayed steady from last year, 66% of the students in that subcategory were proficient or advanced. The other area we take a look at that I think got us into school improvement the last time was the students that have IEPs. And a three-year snapshot, again, in third grade, significant decrease in the math score from last year to this year, and the same in the reading. So, again, in third grade, we're going to be taking a look at that and working on making sure that whatever was happening last year is doing something better or different this year.
Mr. Lee, excuse me.
Yes, ma'am.
Do the IEP children have to take the exact same test that you're...
They, they can, or they also, the state came out with what's called the PSSAM, which is a modified test, similar to the main test, but it's a modified, so there's, some of the students take that. And those are all, those are all included in the, in the totals.
Yeah, PSSAM is given to a very, very small percentage of students, and not all students with IEPs take a modified test. There's a, two or three percent of the kids who take that. Everyone else takes the same test.
What is that? Is that behavioral issues?
It's learning supports, learning supports students, students that have speech therapy, those, anybody that has an instructional, an individualized educational program. And, oops, fourth grade, the fourth grade students with IEPs, their scores in math actually went up to 88% this year, and the math, or I'm sorry, the reading dropped a little bit, but it's in the 50s. So, we want to continue working on improving that, because obviously, that would not make the cut score in the, the grand scheme of the benchmarks. Grade five, slight decline in the, in the math for the IEP students, but an increase, a large increase, 19% last year to 37% of the students that have IEPs were proficient or advanced this past school year.
Excuse me, Mr. Lee?
Yes, sir.
Is there just benchmarks for the grade in going, or is there benchmarks also for IEP kids, and they're coming off?
No, it's the same benchmark for everybody. Same benchmark for everybody. So, they all have to follow the same. And again, when they figure out whether we make AYP adequate yearly progress, there's other formulas that they put in there that, that you can make AYP if you show that you've made significant gains within that subgroup, and then you have to have so many students in the subgroup for the scores to, to count in that. But usually, the, these two have been the ones that have caused us some issues over the years, is the students, as I'm sure most school districts have, IEPs and the economically disadvantaged kids. So, we really have to continue working hard with all the kids, but we want to focus in on, on those two groups especially. As you may know, the PSSA, the students are scored into four categories, either advanced, proficient, basic, and below basic, and the advanced being the top group. So, it's also nice to take a look at how many of our kids scored in the advanced category in each of the grades, in me, reading and math. In grade three, 71% of the students in grade three scored advanced, which is the top group of those four, and 42% of the kids in, were scored in advanced. Now, again, that doesn't, you know, when I, when I say proficient and advanced earlier on, that, this is just the top category. This is not both the advanced and the proficient, it's just the very top. So, that's why that number may look a little smaller on the, on the reading. Fourth grade is, again, very high in the, in the math for a number of kids that are in the advanced category, both math 78% and reading 53%. And grade, grade five, again, you can see how the, the increase, the line keep going in an upward direction. For math, 64%, and then the reading, 28% of the kids were proficient, or were advanced in, in reading in grade five. Now, the other end of the spectrum, the lowest category, the below basic, and on these, you want to actually see the bar, the bars go in a downward direction, as you can see on this one, in grade three, the, it's almost making like a V. It was at 8%, then 7, and then it went up to 10% of the students were below basic in grade three, uh, grade three reading, actually, the, the bars actually switched because of the numbers. And in grade, in math, we had very little, or not enough to count it as 1% of the students last year, and this year at 3%. So, again, we want to keep working on the students overall with getting them out of the below basic. Fourth grade, you can see theirs went down in reading, the number of kids went down, which is what you want, but it went up 1% in math. And re, in ma, in grade five, again, if you go back to reading in 2008, 2009, we had 20% of the kids were below basic. This year, we're down to 7% of them are below basic, 7% of them. In math, we went from 6% back in '08, '09, down to 2% now. So, again, we're making, we're trying to make strides in all the grades to move the kids through all the areas. So, kind of a synopsis of what I've just shown you so far. Grade three, our math decreased from 96 to 91% of the students being proficient and advanced, but it's still 24% above the benchmark. Our reading increased from 83 to 85, which is 13% above the benchmark score, and our economically disadvantaged students decreased 7% in math, 6% in reading. The IEP students decreased 22% in math, which is something we really need to work at, and 6% in reading. Grade four, we increased to 96%, which is 29% above the benchmark in math, increased 5% in, in reading. Our science increased to 100% of the students proficient. I like bringing that 100% up, it just looks nice. And our economically disadvantaged students decreased 2% in math, 3% in reading. IEP students increased 7% and are, and not 1% in reading. Grade five, math increased 8%, reading increased 12% over the benchmark. That's the whole fifth grade, including all the subgroups. Our writing increased some, 77% last year to 85% this year. Economically disadvantaged student scores increased 3% in math and stayed steady in our reading. So, fifth grade did very well this past year, as did all of them. Last year, I kind of gave you a chart of how we compared to other school districts, and I just received this information the other day, so I was feverishly trying to get it together. What I did is, I included where we are now on the left side of the column and where we were last year on the other side of the column. Thanks, Sam. As you can see, in grade three math, this, last year, we were third, this year, we were, we dropped on to seventh. However, if you take a look at our percentage, 91.1, but then look at the districts above us and right below us in that first column, everybody's in the 90th percentile of being proficient or advanced. So, we're, and take a look at the school districts that we are being right up there with. So, we, I, in a grand scheme of things, I think we did quite well with that, even though we dropped in our rankings there. And the blue over on the right side is the Pennsylvania state average, was over 15th this year. In grade three reading, we stayed pretty much the same, 80, in eighth position, 85.2, but again, 85.2 is very, very good for having that number, many students proficient or advanced in reading. So, even though you may look at that and say, well, we're, you know, you're halfway down the column, but if you look at all of the scores above and below you, we're, we're still doing a lot better than the state expects us to be doing with our, our area. Grade four math, last year, we were fourth in Westmoreland County, this year, we're second. We've moved up, and we're just, we're inching up on Penn Trafford. So, Penn Trafford needs to look out, because we're coming. And grade four reading, we were sixth last year in Westmoreland, now we're up to third. We're going after Franklin Regional in Penn Trafford now in fourth grade reading. And you see, the, the state average is still over there in the right-hand column, 14th down. Grade four science, we're up the top, and hopefully, we'll stay there. We're looking down at Penn Trafford now, not to pick on Penn Trafford all evening. Grade five math, we were seventh last year in Westmoreland County in fifth grade math, now we're second. Now, we're going after Dairy, Penn Trafford's down below us there. And you see, the Pennsylvania's average is over 13th. Grade five reading, we were 14th out of the 18 slots last year, we're now up to seven, seventh position. And again, look at the school districts that are around us, above and below us, right there. We're dealing with the, a lot of the Quad A and AAA schools there. Fifth grade writing, we were ninth, we moved up two places to seventh in Westmoreland County.
I think not only Quad A schools, but economically advantaged instead of disadvantaged.
That is correct. Fayette County, we were pretty much at the top in pretty much every category, third grade math, third grade reading, fourth grade math, fourth grade reading, fifth grade, or fourth grade science, fifth grade math, fifth grade reading. Last year in fifth grade reading, we were third, now we're up to first in Fayette County. And fifth grade writing, last year, we were second, now we're first. Again, I've mentioned several times, grade five made improvements, so I, it, but by my own watching and asking the staff what all, they make a list of things that they did. One of the things they did in reading, using four-square writing, where you give the students a square, and they, in each category, you put, each block, you put a different part of a story, and they put their ideas down, and then they put a story together from that. So, that's good for reading, it's also good for writing, it gives struggling writers a place to start in their, on the, the writing. They also reviewed literary terms constantly throughout the year in all materials, not just when in the, in the reading language arts series, which is the Pearson curriculum, that's the lang, the company we use. So, they were doing it in social studies and math. They were, you know, using terms that we'd use in reading and language arts in, in all the other subjects, and not just in one. They designed a weekly plan format that incorporated the language arts, they read novels together, they have various PSSA prep materials or workbooks that we use throughout the year that, one's called measuring up, that helps students get better at different skills that the state is asking us to do. The last one, the who let the dogs out proficiency bulletin board, which was quite appropriate for our district. Otherwise, that's known as a data wall. And what that is, you know, and I'll use the fifth grade, they had, in the hallway, they had the four categories, advanced, proficient, basic, below basic, and they, based on the foresight test that we give throughout the year, each kid was assigned, had a Scotty Dog, and the idea is, you wanted to see that they could, those Scotty Dogs would move every time we take the test. The kids' names were not on the Scotty Dogs, it was a code name or a code number on there so that anybody walking down the hall wouldn't know who the kids were. I wouldn't, I don't even know who the kids were when I looked at it. The idea is just be able to look at it and say, all right, now, we had this many over here before, now we have this many over here, now we've moved up. The kids do that with accelerated reader all the time, they look at how many points they have, and it gets charted going down the hallway. they have, and it gets charted going down the hallway. In our, and this kind of goes back to when we were in the school improvement plan, and these are some of the things that we do, not only in grade five, but in all the grades, we give the foresight three times a year. Usually September, we give it right at the beginning of the year, we give it in November, and then do it again in January. Teachers develop common assessments that they give at the end of each nine weeks in reading and math. They come up with those through their teaming meetings. We provide extra time and support during the school day to assist the struggling learners in reading and math. We also do after-school tutoring several nights a week. We start that usually in October, and that usually goes up until March or April, right up until the PSSA time. All of our itinerant classes, art, music, gym, library, are forty minutes long, that has helped us with our teaming schedule. All homeroom teachers have an itinerant every day. And several years ago, when I was putting the schedule together for the staff, I set up a schedule for an eighty-minute uninterrupted eighty-minute block of time for language arts. And that, that word uninterrupted is important, so it's not just saying, we have eighty minutes for language arts, and we'll take forty of the minutes now, and we'll do forty minutes later on. It's eighty minutes of uninterrupted time for language arts and a sixty-minute block time for math. In grade five, because they switch classes amongst all six rooms, they have eighty-minute blocks for both reading and math, to make the schedule work for them. We have our, because we have those itinerants, we have our elementary teaming meetings at eight-thirty every morning. It's pretty much how I start my day every day, get a cup of coffee, go to my teaming meetings, different grade each day. The teachers have different meetings on different days, they have a curriculum meeting one day where a team leader facilitates that, myself, Dr. Scott, Dr. Monar appear regularly. Student concerns, the guidance counselor meets with the teachers during those meetings. And then the newest meeting for the elementary is the intervention enrichment meeting, where the teachers sit down and they look at the, what skills the kids need to improve on, and during their intervention enrichment time, which if you've heard the kids come home, you might hear them come home and say that they were in IE time today. That's not a bad thing, that's a good thing. And they spend the time working with the kids, either working on skills that they need help on, or if they understand that, there are certain, some of the rooms have, they do some enrichment activities in reading and math. At the bottom of this slide there, you'll see that each grade level has at least a forty-minute block of time every day. So for example, if you take a look at grade two, any day of the week, at one o'clock, you can go into my second grade hallway, and you'll see my teacher switching kids around, and going in, closing their door, and working on reading math skills in different rooms, different skills, different days. And the kids, whatever room, if you're in room A today, next week you could be in room B on a different skill. So it's to be moved consistently and continuously. Grades three, four, five, theirs are later in the afternoon, just because of the way the schedule worked out. Again, each grade level has a minimum of thirty-five minutes built into their schedule for that. Somebody called that sacred time the other day, and I certainly will agree with that. That is the time that when we try to schedule other stuff around it, we stay away from interrupting that as best we can. We try not to use the student recess time, but it can be used as needed if we can find another spot to help kids with that, but we still want to make sure that they're getting the best they can. And again, I mentioned the after-school tutoring that we have offered the last several years, and will continue doing this year. We do a teaming calendar, so that when I meet with the team leaders every other day six, that we make, look at what we're going to work on within that grade level for the next month. And this past school year, Mr. Claire and I sat down at the, when he was principal at the middle school, and we actually had the itinerant teachers, the art, music, gym, library, computer teachers, meeting with their counterparts at the middle school. We scheduled ourselves a day at eight-thirty in the morning that they could get together and look at their curriculum, and try to, you know, make sure that we're giving a solid curriculum even in those areas from kindergarten all the way up. During the teaming meetings, the teachers establish the essential outcomes, what do they need to have to learn during reading and math during each semester? They do curriculum sequencing, otherwise known as curriculum mapping, and again, they create and develop, or deliver the common assessments in reading and math and the foresights. They also use that time when we do give the foresight test to analyze the data. They take a look at, how did the students do? The foresight test we give in-house, it's scanned in-house, and within twenty-four hours of the test being scanned, we have data, we have reports that the teachers can pull off, item analysis, things, things that they can use to see how did the kids in their class and their grade do on the foresight test, and what do they need to work on. I was showing my fourth grade staff today, the, there's a site called E-Metric, and what it does is it actually gives you information from the PSSA, and it actually will take, it will show you individual students and show how they did in each of the skill areas that the PSSA is testing, what the skill, the anchors that we are expected by the state to work on with the kids. Again, we talked about program decisions and finding ways to assist the struggling learners. We're always looking to make them better at what they're doing. So in conclusion, overall, the scores were either stable or increased in all the different grades. We still want to continue working with, specifically with the kids that have the IEPs and those that are economically disadvantaged. And our intervention enrichment meetings will continue to focus on those two subgroups. And our reality is that we're doing well, I think you would agree by what you just saw up on the screen, all the charts and the bar graphs, that we're doing very well. But again, we also know that the benchmark is going to go up again this year, and it's going to go up again next year. So we have to keep working at improving it so we stay above what we're expected to do. And I did a comparison of this year's scores to next year's benchmarks, and what it showed was we're well ahead in math, so we would, if we use this year's scores to next year's benchmarks, we'd still be where we need to be, but the gap decreases in reading in grade three and four, and grade five would end up being below basic, or be below the AYP benchmark. So we need to make sure that grade five continues to grow in reading as they did this past year, because they really did an outstanding job with that. And that's the end of the slide. Thank you. I do have, I do have a copy of what you just saw, so I'm going to pass those around.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
What percent of our kids are economically disadvantaged on the testing score?
On?
Well, you showed some skills, it said these kids are economically disadvantaged. What percent of our students, your student body fell into that category?
Well, fifty-two percent of the students at SES are in the whole building. I'd have to break out, just if I took second grade out of that, so I'm sure it wouldn't be too much lower than that, probably at least fifty percent, forty-nine percent. And that, again, economically disadvantaged is based on whether you're qualified for free and reduced lunch, it's based on income.
Okay, so those charts that you were showing us are about half the kids then?
Yes, in each of the grades, yes. I'm sorry.
I spent a lot of time on the phone with the guy from the Department of Assessment at the Department of Education, and I still am not very clear, can you give me a definition of what you call below basic, basic, proficient and advantage? Give me a definition of that.
They use a scaled score based on the number of questions the kids answer correctly, and based on that scaled score, the state is able to identify that this range of scores puts you in below basic, this puts you in basic, proficient and advanced. That's how, we base it on what they give us information-wise on that. Maybe Jack or-
I was under the misconception that there was a relationship between these test scores and grade level, and there isn't. There's no relationship between this and grade level.
Catherine. When I receive our daughters, and our daughters take them in elementary, we receive a report every year. They have a bar graph, and it has like zero up to whatever the highest number is, and this number would be basic, and then this number would be, what is it?
But my question, Mike, is he told me there's no relationship between this and grade level. In other words, this is what he told me, he said that, say you're in fifth grade, they could ask you questions from first grade, second grade, third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, they're looking at cumulative knowledge. But he's saying because it's a criterion reference test and not a norm reference test, there's no relationship between this and grade level. Is that right?
Norm reference.
It's a norm reference test.
Okay, he's telling me it's criterion referenced.
It's not. It's a norm reference test, and every year, the number of students have to achieve for proficiency changes, so therefore-
This guy doesn't know that it's a norm reference test?
I don't know what this guy knows, but I have to tell you that.
It's not criterion?
No.
I'll have to call him back. Oh my, I'll have to call him back.
Call me if you have any questions.
This is the Department of, Department of Education Assessment Division. It's a norm reference test. I had a, okay, now again, let's get back to advanced, basic, below basic and proficient. And I get the scaled score, but what would it mean if you said Johnny is proficient in reading? What would that mean?
That means that in comparison to students across the state, on that one year, that one test, they establish what the baseline proficiency would be. So the next year, it could be a number like thirteen eighty-eight this year, next year, it could be like eleven thirty. That's why it's a norm reference test, it's a change from year to year. So it's based upon collecting all the scores and then determining what that proficiency line would be.
So when you tell a parent a child is proficient or advanced, it doesn't really, see, this is where I'm having trouble understanding what their definition is. I know the scaled score, but I'm trying to get back to the words. If you're proficient, to me that means you're real good. If you're advanced, that means you're really terrific. If you're basic, that means you're good, that means you're okay, right?
When you say we want some kids that are proficient about us?
Yeah, but if you're basic, that's okay, Dan, right?
When you made a promise to your proficiency, low basic means we need to support you and help you continue towards that. The expectation is that we need to have all students at this threshold.
If you are proficient, you're meeting with benchmark goals, what the state establishes you're learning in that subject at that grade level. So if you're basic, it's only simplifying it to say that's okay, it's not, it means you're not meeting that targeted learning level.
Dan, how would this correlate with grades then? In other words, if a hundred percent of the kids in science are advanced, would they all be getting As then? Is there a correlation between teacher grades and this?
No, no more than there was on, for example, the Iowa test, the basic skills.
Yeah, but nobody ever scored a hundred percent, that's-
Right, but people would score in a ninety-ninth percentile, right?
Those kids made As, those kids generally made As.
Some of them didn't, some of them made Cs as well.
A lot of them did well, yeah. You said that you use various PSSA preparation materials, such as a measuring up workbook. What is, what are those things?
There are companies that have workbook materials that are, they're styled similar to how a PSSA test is, so, you know, if you're not used to taking tests with bubbles, you know, and open-ended questions, it gives the students an opportunity, just like any math book or workbook, to work on skills.
And we're being able to get away from those outside materials, because now all of the companies, last year when we adopted our language arts series, this past year when we adopted our math series, all of the major publishing companies, they gear their, they adjust their materials to be congruent with Pennsylvania's standards. If you're, if they're selling down in Texas, then they have it, if you're in Virginia, then they're congruent with the Virginia's standards of learning.
We just adopted those two curriculums, they've been on the board, social studies and language arts.
Right, social studies, language arts, and then math. And what we, before, when we were dealing with old materials, we used to go out and purchase a lot more outside consumable materials, like PSSA coach, buckle downs, which was used a lot. But we really have been able to get away from that, because the series we're purchasing provides, they integrate standards-based materials.
You're using that measuring up workbook. But this is, this is a concern that I have, and I'm worried about whether our district got short shrift. Last Friday, there's an article on the front page that ninety-four percent of all kids in Pennsylvania, all schools, made AYP. Ninety-four percent, seventy-six percent didn't. This is what-
Ninety-four percent of schools, not ninety-four percent of kids.
No, no, it's, well, let me tell you what this says, Jack, and this is what I was worried about. In Westmoreland and Fayette Counties, Burl, Dairy, Latrobe, Ligonier, Penn Trafford and Frazier were the only districts in which each of their schools met all the goals for test course, graduation and attendance rates. Southmoreland is not listed.
That's correct.
Why?
Because our eleventh grade, we slightly missed the benchmark, we, 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 we but the schools still made AYP. Yes.
But why wouldn't have to be listed, Jack? Because it says the only districts in which each of their schools met the goals. The school met them.
What you said was the schools met each of the targets, and there are a series of different targets.
You said goals for test scores, just the goal of the test.
I think the goal is the word they're using for, there's what, thirty-some benchmarks?
Correct.
And you don't have to meet every benchmark in order to meet AYP overall.
No, not at all, because it says Mount Pleasant, three of their schools did, they met AYP and three of their schools didn't. But I was just surprised, are they saying that our high school doesn't meet the AYP?
There are, there are, I believe seventeen different categories.
Yeah, it's a breakdown, I understand.
For example, economically disadvantaged kids, kids with IEPs, English language learners, we have enough of them, females, males, and there are a list of them. So for example, if one of those subgroups, and we'll just pick on males, I was making that up, if our males missed that benchmark by one percent, then obviously we didn't achieve on all the benchmarks, on all the-
But they're saying, you're saying that the economically disadvantaged kids at high school were the problem? Is that fifty-two percent of the kids that who took it? I just was real, I thought all our buildings made it, I just-
All of our buildings made AYP, you did not hit the economically disadvantaged benchmark in eleven graders.
Well, then we should be listed as a district where all the schools met the test scores.
We'll talk to the newspaper.
That's why I'm watching it.
Well, just to talk to the newspaper, do you have an issue with them?
I don't have an issue with them, I just think if we made it, we should be listed, that's my concern. Because I was under the impression we did.
Anyway, Mr. Lee, a few years ago, he went now to the wall, I mean, almost physically now to the wall, that it was not acceptable what was going on, with their scores and stuff like that. Well, my congratulations, job well done.
Job well done.
To you, to the rest of the administration, and most of all, to those teachers back there. You guys are doing a heck of a job, just keep up the good work.
Thank you.
It's fantastic.
Good job.
And helping the kids. Well done. Good job, Jack.
Thank you. Let me try to clear up my miss, my misspeaking.
Go ahead.
High school is in warning status this year because of the low performance of the economically disadvantaged eleventh graders, they did not meet the benchmark target.
I wish I would have known that, I was under the impression that they hit them. So that's, that's like a fifty-two percent though. So I have another question, are there a lot of adapted and modified testing done with the IEP students?
With the PSSAs or overall?
Well, I'm sorry, the PSSAs, because the guy from the department said that you can have an adapted test, or you can have assistants taking the test, you can have a modified test, you can have people help you take the test and stuff like that. Is there much of that, that was the question?
It's based on what is in a student's IEP, there is a modified test that a very small percentage of the students, of learning support students may take, also-
I believe it's, I believe it's three percent, Dr. Feigen, there's the Pennsylvania alternate system of assessment, which is for students with severe disabilities, and we're capped at one percent of students who may take that.
There are also students, learning disabled students that take the regular test that are allowed to have allowable accommodations. For example, if you're taking a math test, but your learning disability is, you have difficulty reading, then some of the math questions maybe, you may have a reader read that to, obviously not for reading, because that's what you're being assessed on.
Age and parents or-
No, it's either age, but typically, we do our PSSA schedule, so our learning support teachers can be scheduled with those students as much as possible.
Yeah, right, right, thank you.
Mr. Miller, you have a question?
Well, it's maybe for a comment. I happen to be one who believes there's probably an overemphasis on testing at the state level in these kind of, these kind of measures. But having said that, that's, that's not, that's not our control here. And I really like your attitude, and I remember Dr. Scott said, well, meanwhile, while there is testing, bring them on, we're gonna, we're gonna pass them. And I really like that attitude, because that's a given. We have these standardized tests, and you've really done a tremendous job, and I really, really commend you for it, even though philosophically, I think probably public education puts too much into testing.
I would agree with you, Mr. Miller, and I quote you often years ago, when you looked at all of this, and said that we always have to work within our givens. And that kind of means, though, don't spend too much time trying to fret over the things that you don't control. And we play by the rules that were given.
Have we given up all other kinds of standardized testing, like Iowa, California, they're all done?
We do not give the Iowa test. We still give the intelligence assessments.
Yeah.
In a very two-way form. No, because we feel it's redundant, because we're giving the foresight tests, which are, you know, pretty predictable and reliable. We decided it was, there were better ways to spend our money.
Is that it? Thank you, Mr. Lee, Dr. Scott. Any citizens' comments? Hearing none. Cover motion to adjourn to executive session?
Sam, I have asked for old business, and it was just skipped over. May I speak about concerns I have of old business?
A few minutes.
Or if you don't want me to, I won't. I just, I'm very concerned. This is part of my report from the intermediate unit, and this is information that was given to us, prepared by Dennis Solodnik, and I thought that the board would be interested in this. One of the people on the board with me told me that they have never seen this before, and they were not aware. They wished that they would have had this over the years for planning purposes. And it shows that Southmoreland has lost eighteen, almost eighteen and a half percent of students since the year two thousand and one. And the shocking thing to me was that in Westmoreland County, we have lost six thousand nine hundred and fifty-two students in ten years. That's seven thousand kids that, since two thousand, in Westmoreland County are gone. When you add up our other losses, we've lost a total of five hundred and fifty-two in eighteen years. And I just was, Dennis Solodnik did this, he's an amazing person, their business manager, brought this stuff from the Department of Education. The other, several of the school directors had asked for this, and I just thought, maybe it would be something that he would be interested in. But the other thing that-
Just to comment on that. What is, no, I don't, I think this is pretty common sense. The birth, the birth rate is going down. We are not a population growth area, the way some, some areas are. In fact, it's pretty stable throughout the United States. Growth areas, such as Pentrafford, have not had as high of a, I'm just looking at that, Pentrafford has not had as much of a decrease.
Twelve percent.
That's seven hundred and ninety-nine.
Twelve percent, but it's still, okay, we're at eighteen, at eighteen percent. We haven't, I think it's common knowledge that there are fewer kids these days, and there are other options, but I somehow find this problematic, as putting this out as kind of a scare.
No, 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 no.
That we wouldn't be aware that population has not been growing in our community. I mean, look at the census of nineteen ninety, look at the census of two thousand, and you'll see it, the adult population has changed too, and so I don't know that-
Levi, it bothers me that our, that we don't have economic development, apparently. That we don't have people moving into the county. That's what bothers me. I didn't realize it was so pervasive. Now, Norwin did have a one percent increase, they bought fifty-seven students. So Norwin has some, but it just bothered me that, as a county, you know, we're seeing such-
I don't think there's anything surprising. Franklin Regional, that area has been a growth area, and so very small decrease. Latrobe, Hempfield, I mean, it's, and do I wish that our, our area would be growing more economically? Of course I do. It's not my-
I hope so.
But I'll tell you one thing, that brings people into, young families, into, into a community, good schools.
Right.
That's what they look for, good schools, the kind of thing we saw up here. So I really think this kind of down, being negative toward our public schools here is really, if you want, if we want to be for, I'm saying to myself, if you want to be for development, let's improve our schools. That brings, that brings growth, not being negative toward our public schools.
Well, one thing we gotta remember, Levi, I mean, we lost Sony. We lost the other plant across the street. Sure, sure, we're gonna lose a lot of kids. I mean, we lost, you know, the base over there. People come in to go work at Sony, people come in to go work at the glass plant. I mean, you know, it's American glass. There's a lot of things we have to look at together, and I think that's what's happening. I bet you we lost the biggest budget we lost was because Sony.
Certain factors in.
Yeah, I mean, it really does.
Well, anyhow, the, I didn't ask for this, but I wanted to share it, because they gave it to us at the intermediate unit meeting. The other school directors were concerned about it. They're all concerned about the lack of economic development, and they're worried, you know, about what's going to happen over the long haul. There's, there's a lot of hope riding on the Marcellus shale. They, that might be, you know, they have it in Murraysville, which is Franklin Regional, so that might be helping, helping there. But the concern about the Marcellus shale is that everybody in Harrisburg wants it. Whenever you go to, when they talk about Marcellus shale and so forth, what they're saying is that the people who are demanding it, it's almost amazing. They want it for the general fund, they want, they want money to put in the pension funds, the schools want money, the prisons want the money, the roads want the money, the port authority, the public transportation wants the money, welfare, medical aid, deports, municipal building, they want property tax relief. So I'm concerned that, you know, we may or may not be able to get our share of that, and that's, again, a big concern. But I do know that they do have Marcellus money coming into some of these areas, and hopefully this will help in the future. The other thing that-
Before you leave, just could I comment a little bit? I did read this earlier today, and I was interested in the teacher count. In nineteen ninety-eight, we had a hundred fifty-five, two thousand and eleven, which would have been last year, we had a hundred fifty-two. This year, we're at one forty-six. So that's a reduction of nine staff members. But I was curious, because it seemed that there were a lot of teachers we didn't replace, so I got to looking at that. We did reduce our staff by nine in total, but during that period of time, we were also able to bring our speech caseloads into line, because they were out of line, so we had to add a speech pathologist. We were able to add a full-day kindergarten program, which was an additional four teachers. We got federal funding to do a class size reduction initiative, that added a teacher. We added two autistic support classrooms, so that we wouldn't have to take our youngest kids out. So if you, if you factor all of those things in, and take our programming level back to what it was in nineteen ninety-eight, there are actually seventeen, there's a difference of seventeen positions, when you look at the positions that were eliminated, and the upgrades that we were able to make in our program. So I was, I was real glad that you brought that, brought that forth, because that got me to thinking and analyzing a little bit, too.
And Sam, can I discuss this PSERS thing?
Yeah, I think we should hear it. That's for that, PSERS, something we ought to keep on top of that.
I got this, what I did, and again, it's not my credibility that's at stake, but if you contact PSERS, they'll send you this. And I had been listening to, on September the twenty-eighth, there was a panel of professionals from PSERS and SERS who testified before the Senate Finance Committee on September twenty-eighth. You don't have to take my word for any of it, I wrote the website, you have down the bottom where you can go to get it. But this is, I think this is, in terms of planning for the budget, I know I'm the only one who's concerned about that, but-
Don't say that, you're not the only one who's concerned about it.
I'm talking about having meetings, I'm talking about planning meetings. That's my only concern, is the planning meetings. But anyhow, I think this has tremendous ramifications for us whenever we go to do our, our planning, as this would be. There are thirty-two hundred pensions in Pennsylvania. Every one of them is in distress. About a hundred and fourteen of them are not real bad, but the other thirty-two hundred are seriously deficient. The major issues are what they call legacy, which is their debt, their size of their unfunded liabilities, and the fact that existing case law does not allow any changes. The man said that districts were warned ahead of time, he said that they should, that we should not count on any future state funding, we should save any money we have to pay pensions, and that, he said, that school districts are whining and complaining because they put their heads in the sand and didn't listen. You know, this is just what they said. And this shocked me. There are three hundred and six thousand people in the pension system, three hundred and six thousand. SERS, there's PSERS, which is the teachers, and then SERS, which is the state employment system. This is shocking. They now have more retired members than they have active members to pay for. So they're in big trouble. Right now, under the present legislative plan, PSERS debt has been pushed down to be paid up over the next twenty-four years. The present debt, right now, what they owe is twenty-nine point four billion dollars, but they have not yet calculated seventy percent of their year-to-date debt. They run differently. They go from January to January, and school districts go from June thirtieth to July first, yeah, July to June. So there's a difference there. And this is, and Sam, you heard this too, five or six times, they said to the Senate Finance Committee, they need immediate employer contribution rates of eighteen percent right now. Fourteen percent of that eighteen percent, fourteen percent of that eighteen percent is to pay back debt, to pay what they owe. They said that the legal problem is that you cannot change existing benefits for the amount of employee contributions. And they were talking about the need for big infusions from the state, for example, Marcellus shale. Well, if you have a dollar for Marcellus shale, and you give it to a hundred people, it's a penny each. Then they talked about selling the liquor stores, you know, the billions of dollars. Everybody wants that, too, so they don't think they're gonna get it. But he made a statement that really concerned me. He said that PSERS has maxed out their credit card, they've maxed out their credit card. They now have a negative cash flow, which means they have more money going out than they have coming in. And they said their investment returns are like ours, zero percent. And they're underfunded now by almost one-third. So they, they are asking that the taxpayers, well, the state, make immediate payments. Then at the very end, they said something that, and I wrote this down because I was so, so surprised. If you look at that handout I gave you, on that second page, we'll see the last column over, I think it says, the total employer rate, and it goes like, up to like thirty-three percent in three years, in that column. And I thought, my goodness, where are they getting that? Well, this is where it comes from. They basically said at the end of this thing, what they are recommending, or what they need, is you take the existing rates we have, whether the eight, six, five, twelve, one, nine, sixteen, so add seven percent to every one of them, and it changes it to fifteen, six, nineteen, nine, twenty-three, twenty-nine, and up to thirty point six-six percent three years from now, three or four years from now. And they said that the contribution rate could go up as high as forty percent. They said something that shocked me, I still can't believe it, the present debt, tell me if this sounds wrong, the present debt of the pension systems is greater than the debt of the entire state of Pennsylvania. It's now, it's going to, it's twenty-nine point four billion, and as, as they go forward, it's going to reach forty-five billion. So then I looked at the letter from Mr. Petonic, and he talked to us about Act One slash twenty-five. He talks about, you're not, you have to take, help me with this, David, you have to take this year's pension rate, right? And that becomes our ceiling, is that right?
Yeah, I don't have that committed to memory, I think.
I have it with me. But it basically says that-
You don't get any future breaks because of-
Correct, correct, right. So we take whatever amount of money we're paying in pensions this year, that becomes our, like, our base, and that's our ceiling, I think you're calling it. You can't go, you can't say, I want an exception now for increased pensions, is what you can't do. So if we have to pay this money, we can't claim it, unless, as an exemption, to raise taxes. We would have to go into voters for a referendum, is that right?
It's even more complicated than that. Again, I don't have this committed to memory, but there's the, there's the part of it where you have to raise, but they look at your payroll, and you, you have to not increase your payroll. That's kind of a key part of this, because that goes into the definition.
Then the other thing that they talked about, and maybe, I'm sure you know this, but they always talked about you can raise to this Act One index. And I've asked a bunch of people, what is Act One index? And I never got an answer, and I researched it. The Act One index is the maximum amount of tax increase that you can go without a voter referendum. But this is how you do it, and this is absolutely amazing to me. The base, and you get your base index by calculating, you calculate by averaging the percent increases in Pennsylvania statewide average weekly wage, and the federal employment cost index for elementary and secondary school. Then you take, you, you, you take, if you're a school district, you take your market value, personal income and A ratio, and if it's greater than point four oh, the index is adjusted upward by multiplying the base index by the sum of oh point seven five, and the MVP I, I mean, to me, this is, I was just aghast, how we could have something so complicated. So what I was wondering, if it would help us, I think, for future planning, what is our MV, our PI, AR, and then go, how do we get our base index?
The state, well, just to back up a second, what you said about the Act One index, how they calculate that, that the SAWW is based on the last two years, so we're basing the current year's index on the last two years inflation, which is really unfair, but it is what it is. The state comes out with our, they publish the average, they publish our index every year, and ours for twelve thirteen is two point four percent. I think it's gonna be one point seven percent for, the base rate is one point seven percent, but because of our A ratio, it's gonna be two point four percent.
Okay, so that's what, that's what you can do without referendum?
Right.
They gave an example here where they used the one seven point six in the adjusted index, and they had two point three, so that must be fairly typical. So ours is two point four.
Right.
And that means less than two and a half percent, right? That's-
Yes.
But anyhow, I thought was, you know, is this a cost of living index? Is this inflation, I mean, I-
Essentially, that's what it is. But the problem lies in that, you know, we can raise taxes two point four percent without asking for a-
Referendum.
A referendum.
Right.
But we only supply about fifty percent of our, of our revenues from local effort, and the balance comes from the state and federal government. And so we can raise taxes two point four percent on, on half of our revenue.
On fifty percent.
And if, if costs go up, you know, two point four percent in total, you know, we're fifty percent behind.
Is that twenty-five that passed in the law in May?
Yes. It, well, it was passed on June thirtieth, and it becomes effective next, I think it's next year. Next year is the first year where it starts to come into play.
Twelve thirteen?
Yeah.
Okay.
Dr. Fike, just a quick thing, you always say there's no place for old business. We don't generally include it if we don't know- We don't generally include it if we don't know about it. So if you have something you want to discuss, let us know. We'll put it on the agenda. Happy to do that. Not a problem. So either call myself, call Sam, or call Peggy. We'll absolutely get it on there for you.
So, okay, but I'm just, I was just looking for the category of old business.
Right.
You know, just according to, you know, it doesn't matter. But Mr. Salem did recommend that we establish, you know, that we talk, discuss parameters, so I'm giving him mine for his consideration. In terms of long-range planning, again, looking at our student population, and I had a question. Now, they say that the official count for the state of Pennsylvania is October 1st. Is that right? Student counts? Do you have those?
Not with me.
Do we have the October 1st count?
We have the October 1st now.
1977.
1977. Okay, and do we still get information from that Susquehanna intermediate unit? Are we gonna get those papers?
Well, we don't get any information from them. We use...
Well, I mean, they generate that report. That's what I...
We generate the report. We just rent their software, but yes.
Yeah. Are we still gonna get those? Those reports that they generate for us? We used to get them all the time, like every other month, and we'd get one showing students per grade and all that, that chart.
Yeah.
Because I thought we voted on something that they were stopping doing, Mr. Salem. Maybe I'm mistaken, I thought, Eddie, okay. The point is, we are gonna get those, those reports.
Thank you. Can we motion to adjourn to executive session?
Can I say something, please, first? Cal, I was just wondering if you'd like to share with the board where, you and Mrs. Kiefer were on the 24th of September, talking about Southmoreland School District on the radio waves.
Yes, yes, we were on the radio. It's called...
Do you want to share with everybody?
Watchdog Radio. Oh, it's the same thing that we have on the Southmoreland.
Well, I, the only thing that I resent, I mean, I know you have your right to go and do everything that you need to do. But what I resent is you went saying that you were a school board member of Southmoreland School District.
Yes, I am.
No, you did not say you represented them, but you said you were a member. On September the 8th, you came, and you had this whole presentation, wonderful, on a here, our planning session. On the 15th, the very next week, Dr. Molner gave you all the correct information, did a big PowerPoint, said that your numbers were not correct. However, you, you decided that his number, everything wasn't right, and you still decided, that's what I was saying.
We're still working on that.
You still go on propaganda and shout it all over Pittsburgh radio station.
We're still working on that.
That is wrong. Like, how can that be ethical?
I think you should go on the radio, Josie. I really think, I'm sure if you call him, you'd be...
That is just wrong, how you can still go there after he gave all the correct information, and you're still blabbing all over the wrong information. Propaganda!
I don't think my information's wrong.
I have a motion. I have a motion, I need a second. Second by Mr. Loxon. On favor, to adjourn?
Aye. Please use your PhD for the positive, please!